All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Millville Planning Board, Monday, June 24th, 2024, 6:09 PM at the Millville Town Hall, 290 Main Street, Millville, Massachusetts. We'll start with roll call.
Jason Milley.
Roland Jales.
Preston Juskovic.
Justin Allen. And we have.
Pam Williams.
Pam Williams. Okay. All right, we have a couple of meeting minutes that need approval. The first one is the minutes from the May 28th meeting.
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from May 28th.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion to open the meeting.
All right, all in favor of accepting the minutes as presented for the May 28th meeting?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Okay, meeting minutes for June 10th. There is one change here. Pam Williams is marked present, and she was actually absent. So just can I, do I hear a motion for the minutes as adjusted?
Yeah, I can't. I have to abstain. Can I go make the motion?
Someone else can.
Yeah.
You're all here.
I'll make the motion to make the changes.
Okay, second?
I second.
Roland. Okay, all right, all in favor of the edited Millville minutes?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Abstain.
Yep.
I was in here.
All right, so that was, all right. Okay, all right. Moving on, we have a public hearing for 13 Lincoln Street.
So I'm just gonna make a motion to continue that?
Yes. I have something to read first, though. This is an email from Jeffrey Lichens. He is the architect. He sent this email earlier today, 2:12 PM, to Dylan Lindholm, the planner. Please continue the hearing for 13 Lincoln Street to the next date certain. We are still trying to resolve the property boundaries. Thank you, Jeff.
Cool. Do we have a date for the next meeting?
Our next meeting is July 8th.
So I'm gonna make a motion to continue this until July 8th.
Okay, continuance, motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. All right, let's vote to continue the meeting until July 8th.
Public hearing.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Okay, moving on, all right. There is a public hearing for 179 Thayer Street. The Planning Board of the Town of Millville will hold public hearings on Monday, June 24th, 2024, 6:00 PM at Town Hall for applicant 179 Thayer LLC, represented by James Cormier, regarding a 17-unit open space residential development at 179 Thayer Street. Assessor's map, 117, lot 25. The applications include, one, an application for open space residential development special permit, two, an application for site plan approval, and three, an application for stormwater management permit, each to be issued by the Planning Board. The applications and plans are available for viewing by contacting the Planning Board at planning@millville, Mass-, millville, MA.org. So do we?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for 179 Thayer Street.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all right, vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
Can you read Pam's email?
Yes, yep, real quick. This is for tonight. Pam Maloney is our chairperson here on the Millville Planning Board. She sent an email today earlier at 12:48 PM. Dylan, I'm unable to make tonight's meeting. Please let the board know that I would like to formally recuse myself from the board for the duration of this hearing, as she is in a butter to the property.
I'll have her say that out loud, too, at the next one, just so we have it formally.
Okay, all right.
But I wanna make sure her email was there.
Yep, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Jack Hunter, representing the owner.
I'm Rob Knappich from Allen Engineering. On behalf of the owner and applicant, good evening.
As you know, at least Roland and Preston, I don't believe we're here. We came in to see the board probably in December or January. I can't remember exactly, time flies, about what's possible on this property. To go in the way back, many of you guys probably know, there was a proposed subdivision on this property back since 2007, maybe even 2006. It was eventually approved, and there were lawsuits and all kinds of issues, both with the Board, the Board of Health, with the Conservation Commission, and with the Planning Board. And then it lay dormant for a while, went into auction, and then finally, Thayer LLC bought it, and they're out of Sheldon, Connecticut. And they approached me and asked if I'd represent him to see if we could rethink this whole thing. And the reason I say that is, again, in 2000, October 25th of 2006, this subdivision for 17 lots, and can you show that?
Yeah, Tim, can you let me screenshot?
Was approved by whoever was on the Planning Board back then, and it was recorded at the Registry of Rights. That subdivision still stands as an approved subdivision.
These are the recorded plans.
Now, if, if we reassign the wetlands, and if we took it to today's stormwater regulations, we could build it as a 17-lot subdivision, but we don't want to do that. So we came to the Planning Board, and I'm gonna say December or January, to talk to them about the possibility of applying under the open space subdivision regs, which allows us to show what we can do as of right, and this is an approved plan, so it's certainly as of right, 17 lots, and shrink it, and in this case, till about a third of this property. And what we're proposing, after discussing it with the Planning Board, is 17-unit condominium project, duplexes and one triplex. Obviously, it can't be even numbers with 17. It can't be any more than that. So we got a positive indication from the Planning Board to pursue that. We hired Allen Engineering and Rob Knappich. We've re-designated the wetlands. We're going to the Conservation Commission on Thursday to just make sure that they agree where the wetlands are, and that what we're proposing meets the wetlands bylaw. And we're here in front of the board for three things. One is, do we qualify under the open space bylaw, which I think we do? And essentially, the open space bylaw is saying, all right, you can do it as of right allowed today, 17 lots, but you're gonna do it and have less impact on the whole property. We're only gonna have an impact on a smaller portion of the property. We're only gonna have one wetland crossing as compared to three, I believe, on this plan, and it just has a less impact on the neighborhood, I believe, and on, on the general community. The second thing we're asking is for site plan review, that the design of the condominium project makes sense and meets the bylaws. And then the third thing we're asking for is to meet the stormwater regulation through a stormwater permit. And that's where Rob really comes in, in his firm, to make sure that all the runoff and all the systems that collect that runoff meet today's standards, which are very strict these days. So we've submitted our plans. I know that they've been distributed to the department heads. I know that they've been distributed to your peer engineer. I don't expect we have any responses yet, but I thought it'd be best if we introduce ourselves, tell you what we're trying to do. I mean, I don't know you folks, but I've worked with the Planning Board, and I would not have done this project if I didn't think it was gonna be done the right way. I rarely represent a private developer, and I am today. So it's a little odd to be on this side of the table, I may add, but I do believe in this, and if we get it right, it will be done right. So that's my introduction of a little background for you guys that weren't here, especially in December, January. And then I'll leave it up to Rob to walk you through what the current proposal is.
Thanks, Jack. Again, my name's Rob Knappich from Allen Engineering, and as Jack said, we were hired to do the civil engineering for this project and this site. And we started by just taking a look at what had been approved, and as Jack mentioned, this is the approved plan. It shows in gray a roadway, total roadway length of about, you're craning your neck over there. I want everybody to see it. Hopefully, everybody can see it. Any event, this was approved in 2006, I think it was, and because the zoning hasn't changed, it still could be constructed, but it does show a total roadway length of about 2,500 feet. It does show the 17 lots, you know, taking all, all of the land. It would require that we refile with the Conservation Commission for the two wetlands crossings. It is an option. It's not the best one for the developer's point of view or from the town's point of view. The approved plan goes on for three or four sheets showing all the details of the lots. I won't go through them in detail, but I just wanted you to see graphically that this is what, what was approved. And I want you to also see for context, I'm sure you're all familiar with the property generally, but this plan with an aerial photograph underneath it shows sort of the context. The site is outlined in red, and you can see the proximity of some other features, roadways, Megan Way, Berthalette Way, the school, et cetera. It's surrounded by quite a bit of open land, and that's a good thing. We can take it, take advantage of that in ways that I'll describe in a moment. What this plan also shows is, in general, our proposal, which is a single roadway of about 1,250 feet, and off of it, the duplexes and one triplex unit for a total of 17 condominium style units. You can also see in green what we're proposing to dedicate as open space. And the open space bylaw that we're proceeding under does require that at least 35% of the property be reserved as open space. Here, the total acreage is about 32 acres, and we have about 18 of open space, so we're well above the 35 acres. This also shows generally the location of a stormwater management feature here, detention basin, the details of which are obviously shown on the plan. And it also shows generally the location of a shared septic system. The 17 units would be served by a single shared septic system. Turning to the site plan that we prepared and submitted, it is a 19-sheet set. I won't go through each sheet, but I do want to draw your attention to a few things. The first several sheets show in detail the, what we call the existing conditions. It shows property line, topography, wetland locations. We have had the wetland boundary delineated by a botanist as required, and those wetland flags have been surveyed and shown on the plan, and we show them on the plan for both the Planning Board's benefit, and obviously, we have to do that for the Conservation Commission as well. So once we understand the topography and the soil conditions and the wetlands, then we're better able to, in an educated fashion, lay out the proposed roadway and units. And that you can see here. What we've done is designed the road in a location to intersect Thayer Street that maximizes the site distance in each direction, and it comes in, it follows, to some extent, the location of that approved road, but we didn't have to follow that. We didn't necessarily follow it. But since there was some clearing done back, I guess shortly after that was approved, we did follow it to some degree. The roadway comes up curved to the right, as you can see, and then the units surround that cul-de-sac. The topography and the water sheds in this direction. There's a stormwater basin here, and the shared septic system here. You can also see on this plan, in dark gray, the limit of the wetlands. And as you can see, whereas the original plan crossed the wetlands here and here in two locations, one, two, we've eliminated one of those crossings, and we have a single wetland crossing at the narrowest point in the wetlands. So we've done our best to minimize the amount of wetland impact. The other thing that this plan illustrates, as you can see in this hatch area, is that hatch pattern. That is the limits of the proposed open space that would be either deeded to the town or to some nonprofit or homeowners association. Your open space bylaw sets forth the different manner in which that open space can be preserved or assured that it remains as open space. But you can see sort of graphically that it is a substantial part of the property. We've also shown generally some, some ideas, a proposed trail network on the property, and it does connect to adjoining property that's owned by the Town of Millville to the north, and there is a Town of Millville apostle to the southwest as well. So it does abut other town land. So generally, when open space is dedicated, it has greater value if it can be combined with other, other chunks of open space, which is, which is what you see here. So as I said, as far as utilities go, we're dealing with three, water, sewer, stormwater, and the, as I said, the sewer will be collected and then treated in a single shared septic system. For potable water, each of the buildings would have its own well drilled. So there wouldn't be 17 wells, but there would be a well for each of the buildings. And finally, for stormwater, we collect the stormwater in traditional catch basins and other, other drainage structures, and it's, it's collected here and treated. The details of all of this are shown, of course, following, following sheets, which are at a larger scale. They show where the drain manholes are located. They show the existing grades, the proposed grades of the roadway, the proposed grades around all of the buildings. And obviously, your, your engineer, the peer review engineer, will take a hard look at all of that for your benefit. But we do think that the project meets the criteria of the open space bylaw. We also are confident that it meets the criteria and is entitled to approval under your site plan review bylaw. And finally, because of your stormwater bylaw standards, and also because we're required to, through the Conservation Commission process, comply with the DEP's stormwater requirements, we're confident that it meets your stormwater general bylaw as well. So I guess I'll say finally that we understand that this is the beginning of a process. It will take some time and involve hearing from you, hearing from interested parties, and responding as necessary to your peer review engineers' comments. But we look forward to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can sort of discuss.
There are questions from the board, and then up to the public after you.
So I'd like to start. So just so I understand this, and we say it aloud, and hopefully get right to the point. Under your other plan, which has already been approved, you don't need our okay. You just basically, next thing would be to go to conservation.
That's right.
And in this version, we're able to gain 60% of the property as town land.
I'm sorry, see?
I did the quick math. I'm probably off a couple of points.
Yeah.
60% of that acreage would now become open space.
Under what we're proposing, yes.
So you'd have less impact on the property, smaller project.
Yes. So thank you for mentioning that and asking that question, because it reminds me of something I meant to point out but didn't, which is a reasonable question that you or interested parties might ask. Why is what you're proposing better? What benefits are there to the town? And you touched on some of them. What we're proposing is better because it's less impact on the surrounding area, it's less impact on the community, it's less impact on the land. And the benefit that it has is that it does create open space. It also has the benefit of, well, if we or someone were to construct that subdivision, and if it met the town's requirements, which we believe it would, then the developer would have the absolute right to petition the town to take that road as a public way, and I assume the town would do so. Under that scenario, the town would then have another 2,500 linear feet, or almost a half mile of additional roadway to maintain. Of course, if the town did take it, they would make sure that it's, you know, first built to standards and whatnot, and it would be. Otherwise, the town wouldn't take it. But once it did, it would be the town's, obviously, obligation to maintain it. Here, the proposed roadway would be maintained by a condominium association, so we don't, we don't expect that there'd be any town maintenance of that roadway. So that's another benefit as well. So again, thank you for touching on those benefits.
That's a half a mile of a paved road we have to maintain.
Yeah, I think there's another implication, that if we built the full subdivision, the implications to constructing that road would be pretty detrimental to the neighborhood, possible blasting, who knows? It's pretty, pretty steep there and pretty rocky there.
And it would go on for a while.
And it would go on for a while.
That was it for me, because I understand. Well, maybe you can go more into the drainage on the, on the private road before the wetland crosswind? Is that, is that all full drainage with manholes, or is that gonna be country drainage, or how does that work?
The former, yeah. So as you can see, if you look on the more detailed sheet, like sheet eight of 19, you can see that we're collecting the stormwater in catch basins, and then it would flow through subsurface piping into the, into the stormwater basin. That's for the part of the road coming off of Thayer Street going into the site. Similarly, for the part of the new roadway, the cul-de-sac, let's say, where the units are located, there's a similar collection system of catch basins, traditional subsurface piping, and it all goes into a stormwater basin. That stormwater basin would be constructed along with the roadway. It would serve during construction to collect sediment, and it would, that sediment would be trapped there and pulled out, and then after construction, it would, it would serve to essentially clean the stormwater before it's discharged.
And there are cheaper ways to do that than what you're proposing.
That's right, yeah.
So it's doing it the right way.
Well, yes, I mean, we have to. As Jack mentioned, the, the stormwater regulations are pretty rigorous, and they do require that you design the system in such a way that you use these best management practices, or BMPs as they're called, to ensure that any, not only during construction, but forever after, any, any sediment that's in the stormwater gets, gets trapped.
The last one I've got is, from what you're saying about the open space plan, this will bridge two pieces that the town already owns that don't, are otherwise not connected.
Right, a piece to the north and a piece to the south.
So these, I don't know how well you can see the boundaries, but these two are town-owned parcels, and this is a town-owned parcel as well. That's the school, so yes.
And as we move through this process, we will have, we want to work with you on what's the best place to put this open space? Does the town want it? Doesn't, we could always try to find a non-for-profit that has a mission of preserving open space, or the condominium association could maintain it as open space.
Which would be taxable.
It would be deemed restricted as open space, so it wouldn't get much tax, but it would be. I mean, as sitting on your side, I have to say, that's my least favorite one.
I understand that. Just wanna make sure public hears it, so. That's all I got. Sorry.
I had a question, first one for you. Does their application qualify as open space?
Yes. Yep.
All right, so that officially checks, you know, box one. Second was, you had indicated sort of shared septic and shared wells. So are they rigorous and good enough to be able to support, you know, the population that's gonna live there?
Well, the septic system isn't designed yet. We want to get through this process first, but when it is designed, we're confident, by the way, that it can go there, that it can be sufficiently sized for the flow to come from these 17 units, which is based on bedroom count. And the reason we're confident of that is because we've done soil testing in the location of the proposed septic system, and we have the mapping to understand the property, to know that, you know, the septic system is down gradient, and it's not on a hill, et cetera. So there's been considerable thought put into the box shown on the plan, and you can see, we even showed trenches about where the septic system is gonna go. We've sized it. What we've not yet done is prepare the plan to be submitted to the Board of Health. That's the final step, because as I'm sure you know, it's the Board of Health that approves septic systems. So when you ask, you know, is it adequate for this to serve that? Yes, it is.
Okay.
We're confident that it is. Similarly, we're confident that the, that the water is there for, for that many units. I mean, it would be the same number of wells, basically, and the same withdrawal, whether it was 17 houses or 17 condominium units.
And the cul-de-sac is sized for emergency apparatus?
Yes. I don't know that we had a plan that showed the turning.
Yeah, I didn't see it, but it looks, yeah.
And the fire chief has this to look over. We haven't received comments yet, but we will.
When we design this, Rob uses a template that's, measures the largest truck and its turning radius, and so that it can.
Going by the, going by the scale, it looks at least 100-foot diameter.
I thought I saw that somewhere, too.
The diameter of that circle is about 90 feet. A typical comment that would, I'm sure you know, come back from your reviewing engineer is that we sort of proved that, and we have these, this truck turning software that we can put on there and confirm that your fire department's largest apparatus can.
Okay.
Can make that turn.
Or whatever town would be servicing it.
All right.
You guys basically touched on the two things I was gonna ask about the stormwater, and then.
Pam, you, you with us? Any questions, comments?
No, everything's been answered.
Okay, if I can, Justin, just one piece that you, I figured who asked whether it meets the criteria for open space. That's the special permit part, and eventually, if we get to approval, you'll have to declare by voting on the special permit that it meets the bylaw.
Okay.
I'll get you guys the bylaw for the next time, and I'll show you all the points that are important to address.
Yeah, I have it. I could read it if you wanted to, but.
I can hit some highlights. Minimum of 35%, it's well over that, shall be planned as large. shall be planned as large contiguous areas. Sometimes you get open space and it's these little chunks throughout the project. But here, obviously, it's a large area. Arrange to protect valuable natural environments. Others talk about abutting a lot of, that aren't relevant, like if you were about a body of water. So, as Dylan mentioned, there are ten points found in your bylaw. And they're the ten points you're supposed to consider in whether, in deciding whether or not our proposed open space meets the bylaw. We're confident it does.
I have it here. It's that the, the plan achieves greater flexibility and creativity in design. That it promotes permanent preservation of open space. That it promotes a less sprawling and more efficient form of development. That it reduces the total amount of disturbance on the site. That it furthers the goals of the existing community planning. That it facilitates the construction and maintenance in a, of streets, utilities, and public services in a more economical and efficient manner. And last, that it has supporting narrative documentation, which I think it meets all those.
Yeah, it certainly sounds like it.
So, actually, I do have one more question. This may not be a planning board question, but maybe for the public to like to hear. When I was looking at this, it seemed like this isn't gonna, I'll say this right away. Do you think we'll even see any of the houses from Thayer Street? Because it looks like it goes into the back a little bit.
It might not.
Because you're not planning on clearcutting anywhere besides, you know, that area, correct?
Yeah. Some of it has been clear cut before.
But I'm saying, if you, the way it looks like, it kind of tucks in.
So, I'm sorry, what was the question exactly?
The question is, and again, this may not be for this board, but it's a good question. Do we think we'll even see the properties from the street?
Oh, I don't believe so. And the reason is because, first of all, there's a pretty good distance from Thayer Street to the nearest unit. That is probably a solid four to four hundred fifty feet.
Right.
We obviously, unlike sometimes with a conventional subdivision, we're not gonna go in and clear a lot of trees. You know, part of the value of living in a home like this is a natural setting. So, I'm sure the developer's gonna minimize that. And in fact, we do show a limit of clearing.
It's right there, yeah.
Here. You need to clear some, for obvious reasons, construction and grading. We can't clear here. It's a big patch of wetland. So, no, you, I don't believe you'll see that development from Thayer Street.
That's good.
Sheet twelve of nineteen shows what looks like vegetation, trees. Are you planting some, like arborум?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you have sort of like.
Exactly. Thank you for mentioning that. This is what we call our landscaping and lighting plan. So, I'll touch on some of those elements now. It may be difficult to see from there, but you've got it, and hopefully the folks in the audience can see it. But this dark squiggly line is the limit of clearing. And as you can see, as I mentioned, for reasons related to economy and aesthetics and value, really, it doesn't make sense to clear more than what you need to. So, that's what this line shows. We've also shown on this line, I'm sorry, on this plan, I beg your pardon, the proposed lighting, which, you know, there's a, there's a light at the intersection and a few going up the drive. And we've also provided for, even though we're clearing and there's an existing vegetated buffer, we've also provided for a landscape buffer between the nearest homes and the, and the units. So, we do think that we've anticipated and addressed concerns related to visibility and clearing. And as you point out, that's shown on that sheet twelve of nineteen.
Good. To the public?
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. So, now we'll just entertain comments from the, the public. If anybody has anything, just please come up. We'd ask that you state your name and your address.
Where do I go up front there?
Do we have a chair we can put in front of this mic?
Yes.
Okay.
That'd be great.
So, I'm John Dumas. I'm at one ninety-three Thayer. So, one of my properties would pretty much directly abut the units right here. This is where I am. So, my concern is, why are we trying to put so many units and so many people in such a small condensed area where the community is already single-family homes with one to two, maybe three acres of land? This is an enormous construction site amongst the already established homes. Can you answer that?
Sure. Yeah, the short answer to that is, really, the town encourages it. I think it's fair to say. The town adopted a bylaw, which is to call the Open Space Residential Development. So, this property sits in a zone where, I forget the zone designation, but in, in the zoning district that the property is situated in, by right, without, as long as we present a plan that didn't require any waivers, by right, seventeen dwellings could be constructed and basically obliterate the site. And that would have lot area and frontage consistent with, you know, your lot and the surrounding lots, forty thousand square feet and two hundred feet of frontage. So, we could do that, and we could end up with lots that are consistent with, with those along Thayer Street abutting the property. The town, in adopting this open space development bylaw, has basically said that there may be occasions, and there may be properties, where that type of development isn't the best development. And so, the town bylaw says that if you're in this zone, although you could do that by right, you have the option of pursuing this open space residential development. In order to do so, you're required to prove to the board how many lots you could have, how many homes you could have constructed by right. And as Jack mentioned, this is, this, the first plan certainly demonstrates that, because it was approved. So, we took that number seventeen as the byright number. We then looked at the site and said, well, seventeen is the byright number. It wouldn't make sense to sprinkle seventeen condo units over the whole site. Because after all, the point is to concentrate development, provide open space. So, that's, the answer to your question is, you know, why are we concentrating it here? A, because this is the best part of the site for it. B, because it minimizes the number of wetlands crossings. C, because it results in a large patch of open space. And finally, again, I, I don't know how else to put it. And I think I'm correct to say that the town really encourages this kind of development versus this kind of development. So, I hope that answers your question.
Somewhat. But why wouldn't the development be two or three houses as opposed to seventeen units?
It could be. It could be. But we live in an age when property values are high, there's a need for housing. And like anybody else, the, the landowner, the applicant, is entitled to make a profit. So, I'd be lying if I didn't tell you that the goal of this is to make a profit. The goal whoever built your house and sold it to you was to make a profit. That's just the way it works. It could be two or three, but there wouldn't be.
The other way to look at it is, we're not gonna have seventeen sources of revenue for property taxes as opposed to two or three. So, as town's perspective, this provides value for us.
How many taxes you getting paid out of this? Thirty-five?
How do you mean? I'm sorry.
It's gonna be thirty-five units?
No, no, no.
Just real quick, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. Just name and address.
All right. Mike Staples, two twenty-one Thayer Street. So, you got seventeen units, multi, two families per unit, or is it just seventeen families?
Seventeen families.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Because you were saying duplexes.
Well, they are.
This.
How many duplexes?
Six.
Eight.
Eight duplexes.
Eight buildings? Oh, because we're under the impression of seventeen.
Oh, no, 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 no.
So, there's a duplex. These are all duplexes, duplexes except for this.
So, you're talking eight buildings, because we're under, it said seventeen multi-unit.
One building has three units, because you can't do more than seven and.
Okay.
I got one more question. So, if I'm correct, the developer on this property, who's not here tonight, did the ones on one twenty-two Blackstone Woodsocket State Line or no? It's not the same one?
This developer's never done anything in Massachusetts. That's why he called me.
I got you. I was hoping that'd be a reference point.
No, and he has done condominiums in Connecticut. He's from Connecticut.
Gotcha.
Who is he?
His name is Jim Cormier. He bought it and, that's all I can tell you. But I think, Rob, you know, I was thinking, when you asked that question, if you can't see it, the impacts are gonna be less, because we're only two bedrooms per unit. Where if you had seventeen houses, they could be four or five bedrooms. And so, traffic would be even more.
Well, I think we're gonna have enormous amounts of traffic with seventeen families living there. Each family a minimum of two cars.
With a subdivision too.
Well, with the subdivision with two or three houses.
So, do you understand that the subdivision that they already have is pre-approved and we don't have a say in it?
It's approved.
Okay.
So, that.
For seventeen houses.
For seventeen houses.
Diane had the history.
It was approved in two thousand six.
Two thousand six.
I thought that all got thrown away because of everything that changed.
The developer lab.
Get her name and address again.
But the subdivision is approved.
Diane had the history.
I couldn't hear either. Two people talked to me.
The developer that was doing this before, I was told he couldn't use his, his approved plan. That he had, I had brought to many planning board meetings when he was in doing this.
Yeah.
And he had to update his plans numerous, because that plan's too old to approve. You can't use that old plan as approved.
I believe it's dated, so.
It's a recorded plan, ma'am, in seventeen lots.
But it's in two thousand seven or eight.
Yeah, it's still recorded, and as long as we do exactly what's on that plan from two thousand six.
Check with my lawyer, because I, I was told you can't use it.
Okay.
There are two things. So, as far as approval, this plan does bear the signature of the planning board approving the plan. And there's also a certificate of decision that the planning board had signed as well. Secondly, I can tell you with a high, high degree of confidence that as long as the town doesn't change the zoning, and it hasn't, the zoning remains the same, this plan is good essentially forever. If the town changes the zoning, that's a different matter. Then it would have, be resubmitted to the planning board.
Well, I have another question regarding zoning. I tried to sell a piece of property, say, three years ago, and I didn't have two hundred foot frontage. And I had to go through numerous, jump through numerous hoops with the town to get that approved. What is the size of those lots gonna be?
Those lots have two hundred foot frontage.
And how big are the lots?
Oh, gosh. Do you have that wrong?
It's essentially a single lot, so.
Single lot. So, you're gonna have houses on top of one another?
Say again?
How close are the houses gonna be to one another?
Well, are we talking about the seventeen lot subdivision or what we're proposing?
What's your proposal?
So, so, two things. So, there's no question that each of the lots shown on this approved plan has two hundred feet of frontage and forty thousand square feet of area. It meets the zoning requirements. But again, it's not the preferred alternative, certainly from the developer's perspective, and I assume from the town as well. In a condominium form of ownership, in a condominium, excuse me, condominium project, each of the buildings is not on a separate lot. You can see that there are not lots drawn around it. It's like any other condominium. It's a single property. It's the entire property on which there's the, if approved, the Thayer Village Condominium will be constructed. And each owner will own a unit. They'll share the expense of maintaining the roadway, the septic system, the drainage, et cetera. So, when you ask, how many lots are there? One. And that one lot does meet the town's requirements of two hundred feet of frontage and forty thousand square feet of area. Is that helpful?
That helps. Thank you.
All right. Again, Mike Staples, two twenty-one. These are two bedroom units in your proposal. Now, the last developer was required to bring water up from Lincoln Street for fire suppression. Is this development gonna be?
We haven't heard from the fire department yet.
Okay, because that was a requirement of, you know, fire suppression. They had to bring water from Lincoln Street all the way up there.
It was for fire protection, yes. I, we haven't heard from the fire chief yet.
And who would be responsible for rebuilding Thayer Street if you had to bring the water up there?
Oh, the developer.
Okay.
The department heads, including the fire chief, have a copy of these plans and the application. And do we have a timetable on when they're gonna weigh in?
I assume next meeting or the meeting after that. We also are waiting for peer review, which might take, what, do we have two weeks until the next meeting, or? I think it might be a little more than two weeks.
Peer review is the town's engineer, which we pay for. And he'll, or she will review this, especially for stormwater, and then offer comments to Rob and his associates.
I'm Dave Maloney, eighteen Megan Way, over at Butter. So, this is my house, right there. So, if we do the full seventeen unit little neighborhood over here, that's a nightmare for everybody who lives on this street, because you look out your back window into the new house's bathroom. I don't like this either, but this is better, because I bet on this property. It's beautiful. If they put trails on that property, that's great. If it can get into the property that's up north here, but could also put trails on there, that's great. My concern is the traffic, because seventeen residences, thirty-four cars, Thayer Streets, a narrow little road with no streetlights, because it's Millville. I think that's something you have to take into consideration. Are the solar, are the lights on this street gonna be solar powered, or are they gonna be on the grid? You should consider that, because it's a, it's an H O A.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Like I said, I would vote, I don't think we don't have a vote. It's a shakedown. They're either gonna say, if you don't let us do this, we're gonna do the big one.
Yeah.
So, I say, let's, however it is to go.
I think it's up to all the committees to decide as we go down the road.
Yeah.
You know, they may get shot down by the fire department.
It might, yeah. But I mean, seventeen new property, I mean, taxpayers.
Yeah, I was under the impression from the letter I got in the mail, it was seventeen multi-units.
Wow.
And that, you know, the registered letter I received, it's only eight buildings.
Seven duplexes, one triplex.
And that's all can ever be built of, ever. And the open space can never be enclosed on.
That's a good point that I didn't make. Thank you, Jack. Part of the open space requirements is that there be a legal mechanism that prevents that open space parcel from ever being built on. You know that. And, and the bylaw does set forth the different requirements and who, who can own the open space to ensure that it's never built upon.
You know, I do this a lot on the public sector, not on the private sector like I am here. And this is a very popular way of trying to preserve open space, reduce the footprint and the abuse on a site. Because, hey, it was two thousand six, but he was gonna take the whole site and beat it up pretty good.
I have one more question. John Dumas, one ninety-three Thayer. With the open space that's being proposed, what does that really mean, open space? I, I know you said you're gonna probably build trails, or it's gonna go back to the town. What else would be proposed? What would you guys think about doing with that?
It, it'll be restricted to open space and passive recreation use with whatever the owner, be it the town, a nonprofit, or the condo association, which I don't like, but it could be, but they'd be limited to that. Just passive, walking trails.
Okay. So, we're not talking, like, cutting, clearing?
Yeah, I can clarify that too. That open space doesn't mean that it's open, which, when I started this job, I thought it meant that they're gonna clear everything. It means trees, you know, whatever's already there.
It's left alone.
It's left alone.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Native land.
Yeah, natural space, yeah. Woods is natural space, yeah. Not open.
Natural space is probably a better word.
I know. Another word, open space.
I think a certain word, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. Trails, for the most part. Walking trails, maybe, you know, walk your dog, or if we allow bicycles, maybe. I don't know what the.
It's up to the town.
It's up to the town to decide. But yeah, mostly walking trails.
I have a question. Eighteen Megan Way, and I'm sorry. So, if the condo association takes ownership of the open space, can they restrict access to that open space?
No.
So, that's public space, even if the town doesn't take.
In my opinion, it'd have to stay open to the public.
Okay.
But they'll maintain it as much as a maintaining is. That's why I really prefer one of the other two. That's my own personal preference. It's up to the board, not me.
Yeah, Blaze was on a one ninety-two Thayer Street.
I'm concerned with the roadway coming out onto Thayer. How much water are we gonna catch from that?
Yeah, so, um, not much and, not, and the reason is-
Hey, let me show you where I am. Right around here.
Okay.
And I'm gonna catch all this water. And the road pitches down on the right-hand side.
That's your concern. I understand. Let me, um, try to address that by showing you a plan. So this plan shows two things. In plan view, it shows the proposed roadway. And, um, you've just told me that your house is over here somewhere.
Yeah, about three houses down from the entrance of the road.
This plan shows along the centerline, this, this is what we call a profile view of the roadway. And what it shows that along this centerline, if you were to cut it and then look at it from the side, what you see is this dashed line showing the existing topography. And it does drain a little bit toward the road. However, what the design shows is that from the edge of Thayer Street, a point right there, the grade of this road is inward towards the site. And that's what that line shows right there. So any drainage in Thayer Street will go wherever it goes. We can't control that. What we can control is the drainage interior to the property.
That's what I'm concerned about.
That's right. And what we've did, what we've designed is that the drainage that falls on this roadway will go that way into the site, not that way.
Because now it's coming that way. And that's, and it's dirt now. It's not even paved.
Yeah. I understand. As I said, there's the existing profile and there's a little bit of, of, of a grade here toward the road. So I can see that water, stormwater falling on this part of the property would make its way into Thayer Street. However, once this road is constructed, stormwater falling within the roadway, the roadway is pitched inward to the site. You know what I mean?
Okay.
Away from Thayer Street.
So there shouldn't have, shouldn't have any effect on Thayer Street?
That's correct. It should make it better, as a matter of fact, because now runoff from, from a point about here, um, it looks, the, the topography, as you can see, is toward Thayer Street. Now, instead of runoff going into Thayer Street, at least for this roadway section, once it's constructed, whatever falls on the roadway will flow into the site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I'm Megan Bodie Marino, one seventy-three Thayer Street B. So I'm like right next to where the road is that's gonna enter off of Thayer Street. I'm just wondering if you think the seventeen wells will affect our wells at all? Um, and also we have French drains that drain right down into where that road's gonna be. Is that gonna affect our drainage at all?
Oh, no, it shouldn't. And the reason is largely due to what I just explained. The runoff from the site is captured and it, it drains into the site, not towards adjoining properties. And we're able to do that because of the topography and because of the way we've designed the proposed grades. So, um, yeah, I don't know how else to say it, except I'll show you the plan that, um, shows all of the, all of the ways. So, um, so roadway runoff flows into the site and into this detention basin here. And then other runoff that's created, because we're creating what we call impervious surface, roofs, pavement. All of the runoff that falls onto this part of the site is also collected in traditional catch basins that flows into subsurface piping and it flows into this stormwater basin, the same stormwater basin. The rules that govern how we design drainage that are in your stormwater general bylaw and also in the DEP's regulations that we have to comply with as part of the Conservation Commission, um, approval process say that we can't discharge from this site at a rate, after it's constructed, at a rate that, that exceeds what comes off the site now. So what we call our, our pre-development runoff, before anything's built, we calculate how much runoff comes off the site. And then we're able to model or calculate an increase in runoff. That's just a fact because we're creating impervious surface. What we're required to do is design a stormwater management system that holds that difference in runoff. We have designed a stormwater system that does that. But to the extent you're skeptical or maybe you'd like, uh, somebody else to confirm that, as the chairman said, your engineer, the town's engineer hired at our expense will look at all of our design, all of those calculations and basically confirm what I just told you.
Okay.
She had another question about the well as well.
About what?
About how many wells and if it's gonna affect their wells was her other question.
So, um, as I said, each building is served by a well. So there will be eight wells drilled on the property. It's impossible for me, sitting here tonight, to tell you that it won't affect your well. I can say that it's unlikely, perhaps even highly unlikely. And that's because, uh, you know, we're fortunate to live in, in New England and in a part of New England where water is relatively abundant. You drill a well, you generally get water. I'll also point out, or repeat, I guess, that if the seventeen lots were constructed in the conventional subdivision, and as somebody pointed out, there would be more bedrooms and the number of bedrooms directly, um, affects how much water comes out of the ground. So even though the number of wells will be the same under this project versus the approved one, the actual amount of water that comes out of the ground will be less because there's about half the number of bedrooms. So, uh, you know, there's no way that I or anybody sitting here today could assure you that your well won't be affected. But as I said, it's quite unlikely for the reasons I mentioned.
One more question from John Dumas, one ninety-three. Did this plan, um, you talked about blasting bedrock? Does this plan include that or was that from the prior plan?
So, uh, we have done some, uh, testing to confirm that there's suitable material here. Uh, I believe we did some testing along the roadway as well. And, uh, we don't expect there to be blasting to construct this project. Now, did we, you know, do test holes of a density where we can say that they're not gonna encounter some knob of ledge or some boulders? No, I can't say that. But I think Jack implied, and he's right, that if you were to build this project, which had much, you know, greater cuts, that there's, there's a much higher likelihood, especially in some of the higher areas, that this would have involved, uh, more blasting. We, we don't expect there to be significant blasting. We don't design roads or houses to require blasting. We try to avoid it for all the obvious reasons. So we've done that here. I can't promise you that there's never gonna be any amount of blasting required to build this project, but I can tell you that we've done our best to design the project to avoid it.
Me?
Oh, I thought you had a question.
Well, it was part of her question.
Oh.
The well, I was wondering if, um-
Name and address.
Would you add, one seventy-three A, uh, right next to the street where the opening is? We were wondering if the well water did go dry, would the town help us to figure out how to get water again and help us pay if we had to make a new well or whatever?
Your best, would the town do that? I can't answer that.
Well-
Well, I can tell you if this was a seventeen lot subdivision, each individual homeowner would drill their well, like you guys did or whoever built your house did. It's not gonna be much different. It'd just be a lot less. Uh, it will be drilled by a certified well dragger. It has to be.
And the Board of Health has to-
I don't think so.
Does Board of Health have to look at it?
I don't believe so. No, not for two units. You have to have more.
It's a lot of drilling, running over eight wells.
Um, we can, I'll tell you what, uh, I promise this. We will ask the Board of Health, if they're not, if they don't have jurisdiction, which I don't think they do, but they may have some, um, say in that part of it. And I will personally look into that about-
Oh, good, thanks.
How to, uh-
Yeah.
How to monitor that a little bit.
It could be expensive and it wouldn't be our fault.
We get asked that a lot, a lot with bigger developments. This is in the scheme of things. I know it's big for you, but in the scheme of things, it's not that big. Um, but yeah.
Could you, I don't need to be there, so could you show, I left two thirteen. And when it rains hard, the water from that property runs between me and my neighbor. And when it rains hard, it washes my driveway away. Could you show me on there where two thirteen is on that?
Where's your property?
Two thirteen here.
Show me where it is on here, first of all, please. If you can.
I don't know if I can. Is this the corner? Is this the corner, right here?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm right here.
That's yours?
That's mine.
Okay, so let me-
And there's a brook that runs, there's a brook that runs through there and it washes us away every rainstorm.
What's your last name?
Hadley.
Hadley, okay. So there's your property, yeah. Um, so what I can tell you-
It runs right through these, these properties.
So what this plan shows is your, the back of your, your lot. And what it also shows is that there's, there's a grade off of this property. Difference in elevation of about twenty feet.
Okay.
From there to there, going downhill.
Yeah.
But, um, this also shows that at the top of that hill, our development kind of stops.
Yeah.
And the result is, what you're looking at here is a, a property that goes kind of like that. Picture a turtle's back. And so some portion of it does flow towards your property now. Flows into a wetland and I don't know how it collects.
Actually, we got a book on this side and this side.
Yeah. So what I can tell you is that, that we will not be making that worse. And the reason is because of the water that flows into the developed portion of the site is going that way,
That way, okay.
away from your house. And you can verify that because, see that's four oh eight and four oh five. That means that point is three feet higher than that one. So water's gonna go downhill.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have one more question. You think it's better to have eight wells for seventeen units rather than seventeen wells? Because you, what you were saying was if they put in seventeen houses, it'd be seventeen wells. People drawing water. Well, you're gonna have a seventeen families drawing water out of eight wells.
Correct. Yes.
I think it's better. I mean, less straw is in the ground.
Well, you're gonna be drawing more water. You're still gonna be drawing seventeen families' worth of water.
Because we're limited to two bedrooms.
The, the amount, yeah. So, um, when we design a septic system, you, you, part of the criteria is what's the flow? How much stuff is coming out of the house? And the, the rules, DEP forces us to go by, Title V, I'm sure you've heard of it. Title V says that the flow is equal to a hundred and ten gallons per bedroom per day. So DEP conservatively estimates that for each bedroom, a hundred and ten gallons of sewer will come out of the house. If a hundred and ten gallons of sewer comes out of the house, the water's gonna come from somewhere. So that's why we use a hundred and ten gallons per day of water withdrawal. So if a unit or a house, if the unit has two bedrooms, that's two hundred and twenty gallons. If a house were constructed and it had four bedrooms, that's four hundred and forty gallons. So that's the basis of my statement that this should draw about half the water that the conventional subdivision would. Because those houses, nobody's gonna build a house less than four bedrooms. It just doesn't make sense for economic reasons. Not, not in this market, put it that way. So each of those houses, if they were built, would have four bedrooms. Each of these units will only have two. That's half as much water.
Seventy-six bedrooms versus thirty-four.
You look skeptical. You look like you don't believe me. Come on.
His math is right. He may not believe it.
No, I, I can't say that in some unit, you know, there might be four people living there. I suppose there could. But, um, it, it makes sense that a, a bigger house would have more people living in it than a condominium unit.
But you just keep comparing it to the bigger house deal and that didn't fly. That didn't go through. That never went. And that's from two thousand six. And that's probably the problem because they would've had to bring in some water and they couldn't do it. And you keep comparing that and to me, that's not, not even part of the deal. It's what you're looking for now. And you keep comparing it to that, making it sound like it's great.
Well, no, I don't think it's great at all.
No.
That's why we wanna do this.
I'm sorry. Name and address, please.
I left Passano, one ninety-two Thayer Street.
I'm bad at that.
It's okay.
Now, this is a condo association. You're proposing? Mike Staples, I've already said my name five times.
I got him.
But this is gonna be a condo association?
Yes.
They're gonna be owned individually, you know, by association members?
Each unit's owned individually and then all the land is owned collectively.
By an association.
Right.
The condo association is gonna do the maintaining of the property and the snow removal and all that.
It's a shared expense of the condominium.
Of each individual own, yeah. Okay, I understand where, where that's at.
Do you have a question?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm all set.
Two twenty-one Thayer Street.
Yeah, two twenty-one Thayer Street.
Put your hand down.
I know.
Are, are there any, are there any additional comments or questions from the, from the public at this time?
What do we look at going forward?
A bunch more meetings like this.
Are we gonna be notified again by certified mail or something?
No.
No?
You're not, not getting a phone now. This is the notice right now, yeah.
Why am I asking?
Yeah.
Two twenty-one Thayer Street.
Two, two twenty-one Thayer Street. So do we have to look on the website for the next?
They're gonna announce it right now. I don't know what you're gonna do.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so-
Let me go forward for all these that much.
So traditionally, we meet every two weeks.
Okay.
Um, so our next meeting, I think, we've already, we've already done a motion to continue July eighth, so-
But, but it's up to them what, yeah, if they wanna do July eighth or-
I don't wanna meet just to meet.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna have peer review and some comments from, from the department heads, unless I'm wrong, Rob, tell me, I don't see a reason to meet on July eighth.
The next will be July twenty-second.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm on vacation, but I don't matter.
I'd like to see the next one with the, the fire chief, so.
I want to see.
You know, the-
Yeah, so, so like I said, all the department heads have the application.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they all need to submit sort of like their comments.
But I don't know if two weeks is enough time to do that.
Yeah.
I have a question. An artist woman.
Name and address?
She worked on it.
One ninety-three Thayer Street.
And your name?
An artist woman, yeah. Um, my question is, um, I just wondered if you have any idea how much they're gonna cost the, the house? Because if the house has, um, like a high price, it might gonna be two, like a two-bedroom, and it's gonna be for two people. But if the price is low, the two people, it might gonna be for maybe four, five, even six people. So, and that's gonna collapse the water, the electricity, and the transportation, the road, even the road is already, already bad right now. I have a small car and sometime when I live in my house or when I'm going to my house, they drop, they always take a pretty much a whole road. It's really bad. So I just wanna see if you're ready, I know you already say that you're shaking or you already have ready the impact for the environment, but do you have already the impact for the school, for the community, for the road, for everything else, service and everything else?
Well, one of the beauties with a condo association is you have condominium regulations. We could limit the number of people per unit.
I'm not sure you can.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. Um, in- Yeah, yeah. I don't know. Um, in fact, I was gonna say...
Which you can't do in a single-family house.
I don't believe, um, that a municipality through the building code or zoning power can limit the number of occupants of a house. I don't believe you can do that. So I, I don't think you can control that. However, I think, you know, the market, our experience, maybe common sense tells us that the condominium, the two-bedroom condominium appeals to two markets. People starting out, young couples, trying to get into the real estate market, and empty nesters. Neither of which are situations where you have eight people packed in a bedroom. I don't know, um, as an example. So I don't think you can regulate the number of occupants. Um, I don't even know if you wanna do that, but for this type of a real estate, I think, again, experience tells us that it's usually occupied by two or three people.
So, but do you have idea how much they're gonna cost?
Yeah. We haven't done a pricing yet, have we?
We never what?
A pricing analysis.
I, it's not our job as engineers, but the market's the market. I wouldn't be surprised if these are four...
I was thinking about four hundred thousand.
Now, condo associations sets rules. They can always put it into the rules, no more than three people in a unit.
I don't know that you can.
Rob has a lot of experience in these things.
Yeah, the condo association, you can only hang your, you know, certain flag or a certain color.
It only have red plants.
You can't have an American flag in some condo associations, so, make up any rule they want.
We have anything?
Two twenty-one Thayer Street. I just, I'd be curious as to the, the cost of the units because, to say it nicely, it depends on the cost, who can afford.
So Rob's in, he's just an engineer in the property. He doesn't have that.
No, it's a good question.
Because if it's a two hundred thousand dollar condo, okay, if it's a four hundred fifty thousand dollar condo, then we... I'm trying to be nice, it's likely correct, but...
The cost, the cost of the land, the cost of developers, the cost of building this, and the market are gonna dictate at least four hundred thousand.
As long as it's not low income.
I mean, no, and it can't, and it's not a forty B. I, Dylan told me some people have questions. This is not a forty B. If it was, it'd have to go to the selectmen and through a whole different process. It wouldn't go in even in front of the planning board. So...
But definitely, it's not gonna be a low income.
No, it is not, no.
All right, what's the next step? What board is next?
So, thank you for bringing me back to Rob.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Um, but you also get another crack, although you're gonna hear the same thing, on Thursday evening when we appear before the Conservation Commission. And I assume you all got notice of that, but in any...
No, no.
Okay, well, Thursday evening, there's a Conservation Commission meeting. It'll be here at six o'clock. And so we are, we are embarking on two kind of parallel paths. One is before the planning board, and you just heard them say that the next, maybe you didn't. Did you, did you announce the day and time?
We are here on July eighth and July twenty-second.
We don't think that it's profitable for us to be heard on July eighth. I don't think it's a good use of your time or ours, correct?
Or theirs.
Or theirs, thank you, yes. So, so unless you have some reason to do otherwise...
So next up is the week to hear from peer review and then we can have...
Yeah, the most efficient way.
I can come in on the Zoom.
The most efficient way is for us to get the peer review letter, have some opportunity to respond to it, and then be back before you.
And the department heads.
What's that?
And the department heads.
Yes, good point, yeah. The twenty-second, the earlier stuff.
So twenty-second.
All right, so you guys picked Thursday night, the biggest debate in the world.
There'll be nobody here.
Dylan's saying that we need to vote for the date.
For continuing.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to continue this until July eighth, six P M.
July twenty-second.
July twenty-second, sorry. I was trying to remember the date. I'll make a motion to continue this until July twenty-second, six P M at the Millville Town Hall.
There a second?
I'll second the motion to continue the meeting.
All right, go ahead.
Um, okay, let's, uh, let's vote, roll call vote, so.
Aye.
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 And aye. So it is continued until July twenty...
So we don't have to vote to close it because we can take it?
No, you're not closing nothing.
Don't worry, we're not closing.
What's your attitude, sir?
Just continue, just continue.
It makes me have a heart attack.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Well-attended planning board meeting. That's cheap now.
Finish the rest of the agenda. Yeah, and you can wait a minute till eleven clears. We'll continue. I have nothing.
You have nothing to report, anyway?
Preston, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I haven't seen you in a while.
I know, I know.
We gotta close first, hold on, hold on. We gotta close the meeting first.
Yeah, all right. Um, so moving on to the planners' report.
Well, I was afraid you were gonna yell at me again.
No planners' report.
Dylan has nothing. Public forum, we just spat it. All right, um, so next meeting is...
July eighth.
July eighth. And I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
All right. Go ahead, a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.